Ready?
Okay.
I'd call order of the building board of regulations examiners on fields for September 18th. You start it together.
December 11th?
This, December 11th. I'm reading the minutes in front of me. That's my error. For December 11th, excuse me. You call, please.
Me. Mr. Steele?
Here.
Mr. Straight?
Present.
Mr. Frieden?
Here.
Ms. O'Donnell?
Present.
Mr. Cowling?
Here.
Mr. McCann?
Present.
Mr. Edwards?
Here.
Mr. Feller?
Here.
Mr. Hawkinson? Mr. Field?
Here.
Mr. Locan?
Here.
Mr. McKee?
Here.
And Mr. Bonn?
We have a forum.
We do.
Please silence your cell phones if you haven't already or put them on mute by break. We have an agenda before us. Does everybody got a copy of the agenda? Do you maintain a motion to approve, Mr. Chairman? I move through the agenda and publish. Move. Mr. Steele?
Second.
Seconded by Ms. O'Donnell. Any amendments that we care to meet to this? We have an agenda. I'd like to welcome Mr. McCain to our board.
Thank you.
And can you give us a real short story about Mr. McCain?
Well, I came up here back forty years ago to work on the pipeline and I got the golden handcuffs and never left. My expertise is in the plumbing and mechanical industry here in the state of Alaska and Anchorage for the last forty years. That's all I know.
And if we can introduce ourselves to 'em, starting at the end with Mr. Edwards. Your name and what field you're representing, please.
I'm a general and mechanical contractor. I own a number of warehouses that I've built here in Anchorage. Been here thirty-two years and Alaska's been very good to me.
My name's Royal Field. I'm side build coordinator for lease construction. Troy Feller, I'm a structural engineer in Anchorage for twenty-five years.
Serena O'Donnell. I'm owning Bola Del Enterprises, commercial general and electrical contractor here in Anchorage.
Scott Bowing with REM Architects and I've been practicing architecture here for thirty-three years.
I'm Craig Frieden, mechanical engineer with PDC Engineers and I'm just a young bud compared to some.
We were interns together.
I'm John Steele and I'm with Bettisworth North Architects.
Charlie Straight, I'm structural engineer.
Perry Cowling, I'm an electrical engineer.
Preston McKee, electrical contractor.
Tyler Locan. We do a lot of framing.
Jerry Weaver, director of the department.
James Gray, I'm a firm architect.
Ed Brumthomson, acting building official for the president. The director of public works normally.
Thank you. Just a little point of business. We have an open seat on our chair or on our board for a plumbing contractor, as I understand. So if anybody has a need, contact Mr. Thompson, I assume will be the point of contact for that.
That, myself?
Or yourself.
That way I can give you the application and the name of the person I need to send it to.
I'm sorry, do you live for plumbing contractors?
So you took the plumbing spot?
That's what I thought.
Okay. There's a new person in the mayor's office who's kind of who did things, so we're probably looking for a mechanical contractor at this point.
She's a sheet metal contractor, sounds more appropriate looking at the.
She's new.
Okay. Thank you. We have a set of minutes dated September 18th before us. Will entertain a motion to those minutes, please. Mr. Chairman? Mr. Steele?
I move for approval of the September 18th, 2014 minutes published.
Moved by Mr. Steele. Seconded by Mr. Frieden. The comments regarding the minutes as they're published. And then I'll call for vote, all in favors of adopting those minutes. Say aye. Aye. Any opposed? Outstanding? And it's approved. Just as a matter of course, we should clarify here that Mr. McCain may participate but has not been sworn by this or approved. So you're not a voting member just yet. So just to be clear about that. But we appreciate you participating. So those are adopted. New business, chapter twenty-three, forty-five, to the international fire code. We have some revisions before us. Mr. Gray, would you like to make a presentation to us on those?
Certainly. This is an administrative change that we'd like to submit so that we can, electronic recording of our vertical fire projection service reports. If the folks aren't familiar with those, the fire code requires that systems be serviced annually and right now we have kind of an antiquated system where they handwrite and print these reports and fax them in or carry them in or mail them in or whatever they do with them. There are several companies out in the country that have electronic reporting methodology and they lift electronically and they send them to the jurisdictions electronically. I understand that the contractors are being endorsed to do some of those and so are the, some of the folks who have to administer them. So we just did an administrative change to change the language from faxed in or mailed in to in a manner approved by the fire code official. That will allow us to accept them in any format. That is the summary of the change.
And what is that in our package here? Is that?
It's all in red. You can see it throughout the document.
Oh, you're assuming that.
It's in the page seven.
The primary change is in the back, which is appendix K to the fire code.
Yeah. Page seven, page nineteen, and page twenty-one. Other changes, they're all in red. Very top line on page second, the records section. And then page nineteen, it is the very last sentence right before the knockout section is a banner that quotes out. And on page twenty-one, in a banner approved by the fire code official and then the rest struck out in page one oh four two three. And then the very last line.
Mr. Chairman? Mr. Steele? I don't see any issues per se, but before we act on these, we did act on them previously. So do we need to take any action or can we just approve these in a superseding, subsequent approval or any suggested path?
I mean, vote to retake it up or vote, I mean, it's a, yes, you did approve it before, so you probably just got to vote to reconsider or something, I guess. But yet we didn't do it in the timeframe normally done. So it's just an addition to, I think you're just, just doing an amendment for just the addition to items to add to the arbitrary previously approved.
Yeah, as I said, I don't think it's a major issue. I just want to make sure we're taking the right steps. We'll pass the period with timely reconsideration, but.
I just make the motion in a manner of just to approve the additions and deletions as noted.
Okay. Want to say that motion then? Mr. Steele?
Mr. Chairman, I would move to amend our previous approval of chapter twenty-three, forty-five, to include the amended language in the following sections. And it's K one oh four, two point two. The addition of the last sentence, or revision of the last sentence, reading, reports shall be sent to the fire marshal's office in a manner approved by the fire code official. The deletion of written notification shall be faxed to the fire marshal's office. Remaining language within twenty-one days and the deletion of the phone number at two six seven forty-nine fifty-eight. And then the change to paragraph K one oh four, two point three, status three. And then the second sentence, following division of fire prevention, the language in a manner approved by the fire code official, followed by the deletion of at two six seven four nine oh one or by fax at two six seven four nine five eight. And the last item is paragraph K one oh four point two point four, status four. And following, language division of fire prevention, adding in a manner approved by the fire code official, followed by the deletion of at two six seven four nine oh one or by fax at two six seven four nine five eight.
So page seven. General, page seven, there's some revisions to it.
Well, my catch, maybe there are, so let me see. Oh, I'm sorry. And then the addition of twenty-three, forty-five, nine oh one point six point two records. This appears to be a complete new paragraph, reading amend section nine oh one six two by deleting upon request and replacing it with, in accordance with appendix K.
So those four items? We have a motion on the floor, waiting for a second. Ms. O'Donnell?
I would second that motion.
Seconded by Ms. O'Donnell.
Mr. Chairman?
Mr. Straight?
I guess my permission. What is the status of this? So we've already adopted amendments to the code. My understanding is that IBC has not been adopted by the state of Anchorage yet. Is that correct?
That is correct.
So we're slipping these in before it's been adopted. The currently, the ones we previously voted on have not yet been adopted. So we're changing the document that is not yet in code, correct?
That's correct. Mr.?
They're in the municipal attorney's office in the status that you see here. So we got a heads up. If we have to make a change, we'll make a change. But these changes were already forwarded to the municipal attorney's office. Once they're out of the office, then we'll go to the assembly for approval.
Okay. Thank you.
Did I see him down there? Maybe Mr. Locan?
Mr. Gray, in, you say in a manner approved by the fire code official, would there be a different way other than electronically? That would happen? I mean, we've got a fax or a phone currently, but then if we, I guess, is there looking beyond electronically, if there's another manner that you would approve or look to, I guess?
Yeah, there could be potentially. I don't know what that would be. What this, what this allows us to do is accept them electronically, which we really couldn't do before. Some of these electronic systems that some of the contractors want are, they're all or nothing. So they either do that system or they can't do anything. They can't fax it in anyway. So this would allow us to accept it in any format that, I can't think of anything else right now. You know, electronic method of fax or mail, but there could be something else out there.
Are you worried that they wouldn't take it by phone or by fax? Is that what you're worried about?
No, I guess I'm just trying to clarify what other, a manner or so, looking outside of how else they transport. That's my question. You answered it. I don't know if you were looking for another source besides electronically.
That's the big one. There's a, there's a national company called Bryser that does this all over the country and apparently it's very, very popular. We just haven't done it yet. We haven't been able to do it because we've only got language for these, but it takes a lot more groundwork too. But it is, it takes all the paper out of it and it takes all of the reporting and letter writing and all that stuff, all that out of it. So that would enable us to do that.
If something comes up, it allows them to approve it too. Whereas without a code change, and so a code change is owners to get that changed. They're just, I mean, we're always opening up to ways people to submit things and where we can clear it up in code and not require a certain way, it makes it easier for them.
Mr. Cowling?
It does seem like it's opened way up, but it's almost at a point where it's opened up so much that if I were from a outside jurisdiction and reading this, it's just, it's so vague, I'd have to call to find out what approved. There's no way to lay it out more specifically what you will accept or?
Yes, sir. Chair, I guess you pretty much have to do that jurisdiction by jurisdiction anyway. It's all on our fire prevention webpage. It tells you exactly what you've got to do if you want to operate here.
So there's another?
Clarification.
Clarification, white paper, something?
Correct.
That's available that advises them what is acceptable?
It does and it goes further than that. Our authority to enforce the code is by a deferment agreement with the state fire marshal. So the state fire marshal allows us to adopt and enforce and do all this. Well, the state fire marshal actually licenses all of it. So they don't, they don't get licensed by my office or even by, they may get business licenses or something with building safety, but their ability to do work on fire protection systems is licensed the state fire marshal and as part of the NICEP program. So they, they don't just, they wouldn't just show up in the state and want to do this. They couldn't operate here unless they went through the state fire marshal anyway. So we have plenty of opportunities to, you know, let them know how they get to do this.
Any additional questions or comments? Call for a vote. I think we can do this easily. If it's all in favor, say aye. Aye. Any opposed? Any extensions? And if that's unanimous. Here's your ministry of code, chapter twenty-three, ten. Mr. Thompson?
The, I mean, there's a couple of major, not major changes, but the big change was after I spoke with members of HBA, AGC, and ABC about fees, we talked about the need for some additional bodies to building safety. And so we took a look at the fees, found out what they would, all those groups would be interested, what it all allows us to do. Those changes ended up being just for new construction. They wanted to keep the inspection fees the same. They wanted to keep most of the addition, all the type of things that are not new, the same. So we left those numbers the same, but we did change and move up five percent, all new construction, new homes, new material. And that, basically, I think at the end of the day, it will generate enough funds. I think it was in the $280,000 range, something like that. I think the latest C that will go with this that shows what the cost increase. And that will help us obtain another planner viewer and another inspector, I believe, are the two positions we're going after. With the, if this gets approved, then we would submit the request to hire two new bodies to help speed up certain things. The, you know, with that, we were able to keep that lower because Jerry was successful in adding a, we've added a couple inspectors over the past six months. So we got another structural, another mechanical, one that's been hired and one that's still being worked on. So we were able to keep the fee increase lower rather than trying to get more bodies with a bigger fee increase. Some of the other, there was a couple other things. The planner view per hour fee was raised to match the inspector per hour fee. That was one change that was made because the, actually the planner viewers cost the city more money than the inspector does and we were collecting less money than that. So we raised that up to at least to match the inspector fee. Didn't want to go higher than that. We cleaned up a couple things. We lowered, lowered quite a few fees in onsite for all of the, all the onsite, well, septic waiver fees that were very exorbitant. I felt they were very high. And so we lowered those to our actual costs. So those, those came down. We split out residential re, or re-roof permits. If you look on page forty-eight of fifty-one, we made re-roofs into two categories instead of three, maybe up to 3,000 square feet. So 175, it'll be a real quick, easy permit, one inspection basically. And if they had to get another inspection, they would pay at the normal rate. But what we did was try to, the old code said up to 1,500. Well, no, we got up to 1,500 because almost every house that we did was over 1,500 or over 15 squares. I mean, a roof would be pretty small to be only 1,500. So we made two categories instead. These are for the non-plan review fees that they can be able to go online real fast and get those to make it simpler. And that was at a request of both the industry, but also we only do one inspection per re-roof permit and we were getting more money than what it cost us to do the job. So we worked on that piece. Elevator permits, we fixed a few fees. We made them more reflect, elevator, escalator, dumb waiters, we made them more reflect to what the actual hours of time it took to do the inspections. So those came down slightly, but they also allowed us to charge at a per hour rate once they went above the standard normal inspection time. So if an inspector, you know, like for instance, a vertical platform lift usually takes three hours to do the work. If they go over that, we'll pay, they can pay more, but we limited that down because it used to be just like 600 bucks or $800. We lowered it down, but, so the good ones that only cost us three hours time, they're going to pay the normal fee. But if it takes us four, five, or six hours because they're not prepared, then we can charge the right amount of money for that. So those are kind of the changes in here. Inside the document itself, I don't believe there were, I mean, there were very small little wording changes. I have, I had a letter, I was gonna, I thought Ross was going to bring, which was a kind of an update of what changes were, but almost all of the changes were really in the fees and the rest is pretty standard language. I don't think there's anything other than the normal timeframes that were always set. And I, there was talk of changing and putting in some different language for handyman, but we did not end up changing that language because the state handled it fairly well at their level. So we'll just monitor and follow the state's process for a little while and see if we need to do any additional licensing for that. But at this point, we did not change that. Other than that, I mean, pretty standard, the same admin code that's been around for many years. It's kind of edited off of the main one, very little change. And I did, just to, HBA, ABC, and AGC, all three gave me a tentative go forward with the fees. I worked with them, that's why we came down and locked it in at the five percent. So they're actually going to, I just prepared a letter for them to send them on the fees and they're supposed to be getting back a document. So before we go to the assembly, I'll have the three documents from those three agencies endorsing the fee changes and supporting that for the increases in the areas or the decreases in those areas that we made. So I think it makes a lot of sense. It helps us get a few more bodies in the, in the mix to, to speed up the planner view as well as keep up with the same day inspections.
Questions, Mr. Thompson?
Chair.
Ms. O'Donnell?
Mr. Thompson, I'm currently this year the board chair for Associated Builders and Contractors of Alaska. I don't have any recollection of any document or any request for us to review as a board.
I said that documented, it was just formatted. I've dealt with Amy Nyberg.
I'm Amy Nyberg.
Right. And basically she's waiting for that document and she, I told her what that document was and everybody said, if that's the increases that you're talking about, as long as you put that document out, we just finish this to get through the building board so we can go to the assembly. It's going to take, you know, another month or two to get through the lawyer's office. So we're going to go at the same time. And if, all of them, I told them, John McKinnon at AGC and Amy and also Paul at the home builders, I told them all I would come and present those if they needed. So you're going to, you should be getting that at any time. Those documents would show the fee increase and what it would really cost for a new building permit.
Perhaps I misunderstood. When I heard you begin initially, I heard you say that you'd already run it past ABC, AGC, and the home builders association.
The presidents of those organizations.
And they approved of those great increases, the fee increases for permits. But like I said, I haven't heard anything about this and it wouldn't be in Amy's job description to say that that was acceptable without running it by the board for review. So that's number one. I appreciate your summary of all of the fee changes that, that were elaborated on. However, I participated in the administrative code review committee for the first quarter of this past year and I took lengthy notes, spent a lot of my own personal time participating in meetings where we went through literally every word of that Warren document. Had great discussions about it amongst ourselves, amongst the professionals that were participating that were not employees of the municipality of Anchorage and came to a great understanding of what the document was that was in final draft form when we were done with that committee. None of the changes that we suggested agreed on to put forward to this board for review are in the document that you presented. In fact, there are no changes that you can tell what the changes are in the document presented to the board today. This document doesn't have any tracking. It doesn't have any red lines. It doesn't have any indication that an independent person could come through here and know what was the change.
Not one of the documents that we do for this and at this level come that way. I mean, every other one that we've presented to you doesn't have tracking on it. We can do that for sure, but they haven't been.
Maybe I'm speaking out of turn, but every one that I've reviewed, I'm the only meeting that I missed is the last meeting. I apologize. I was back east with my daughter on a trip. All the ones that are presented to us.
As a committee level, yes.
Even when we review, reviewing the three-person panel documents, all those changes were tracked so that everybody would know what the changes were before they were sent forward. And I think that there's, there's enough new people on this, on this board that they wouldn't know what those changes were without that information.
When we met last time and we looked at all the codes, none of those multiple documents had we been.
And in the 20 years that I've done this, I've never presented a document that has the track changes. We can and we can do whatever you'd like, but, I mean, when you're talking as many documents as we are, nobody's ever really tracked that because typically they are handled in almost all cases in a committee level and the committee approves it and then we come to the building board and the person that is on that. Typically, the admin code is the one code that only governs how the municipality works and operates and the building official in most cases have been always the person that edits that. It's never been part of a committee. I didn't know this was part of a committee. I never had, Ross, if Ross was here, maybe he could answer that, but, I mean, the admin code is how we do our business in 90% of the time. It's not allowed for people to tell us how to do our business with regard to administering code. That's what we do. So the building official typically has always taken the admin code. And I've presented, not the last time, but every time before that, which was probably four or five versions, I've always been the only one that has edited those. So I guess I didn't know there was a committee on this. Ross could probably answer that, but, but I know I went through this daily with Ross and Ross had agreed to everything and really all I played a role in was the fees that I just went over today. And those fees cannot go through until I get 100% confirmation from those agencies that I said that I would be working on in the next, before it goes to the assembly. Because the mayor agrees with the fact that we don't. Because the mayor agrees with the fact that we do not want to go with fee increases if the entire industry does not want to support those fee increases. But the industry comes to me constantly since I've taken over in six months and said, speed everything up. The only way you speed things up is in this industry and what we're doing because of the load and the number of people is add some bodies. So the only way we tried to do it was add specific bodies to speed up exactly the areas that they wanted. And those were the two areas. And so that's why a small fee increase at five percent for just the new construction was in, my view as a building official, I mean, I call the agencies. I can't speak to the board. The board's not meeting when I call them during the day when we talk. I just tell them what we're doing, what we're planning. They say, okay, great. That's great. Give us the documentation. We'll get back to you once you give us the approval or once you give us what you're doing. Basically, this here is, once you guys approve it, then I feel we can move forward with something. To them, to say, this is what we're doing. This is what the building board went with. And then if those agencies, ABC, AGC, and HBA, which are the, the big ones that are affected by this, then we would, we would evaluate that. And if they came back and supported it, then we'd move forward. If not, we would take those out.
Mr. Chairman, but maybe.
Ms. Weaver?
It's too, it's unfortunate, Mr. Nasser isn't here this evening because I think what Ron doesn't know is that, that Sharon did open it up to a committee to look at the admin code and you did methodically go through it laboriously. And I don't think Ron, or that Ross must have shared that with you, Ron. You know, there's two things that happened here. There were amendments made that need to be tracked and they need to be explained. The fees, I concur with Ron on the fees. We, you know, I did look at the fees. I, I, we, these haven't been adjusted for a considerable period of time, two thousand nine or so. CPI has gone way beyond five percent since those days. But the, I had to adjust the fees to, fees are lower where appropriate. So I'm comfortable with the fees. They'll probably generate a couple hundred thousand dollars, which would provide for another structural and planner and counterperson that, so I'm comfortable with that. But you probably owed, you know, an explanation with respect to the changes that were made since that group did meet and did go through it substantially that I think Ron just was not aware that that took place.
I have a copy of all the red line changes right here if you care to have it.
What type of changes are you talking?
Extensive. We have it. Let you have it. And I don't want you to get me wrong. It's not that I object necessarily to fee increases. I don't. I object to the assertion that it's been by ABC and approved because it hasn't been. And so to the boards, the representation.
I didn't say, I didn't say it was approved. I said, we're going to get the approval. They just approved the fact that they're putting forward an increase. That's it. And then they would evaluate it when we decided what that was. If they would have said right off, no, our members would not ever support a fee increase, then it would have been done and we wouldn't even be here talking about it at all. But they all said, every one of them said, we can't approve it. We need to see what it is that you want and then we'll put it to the members and then we'll decide whether or not it's worth it.
Mr. Collins? I'd like to ask about the, the approach of thinking that we need to increase it by five percent. I agree with you. The CPI has gone up, but wouldn't these fees as a percentage be self-correcting by the fact that the cost of construction is going up at CPI? So why do we need to increase the fees to hire somebody? If you're getting more permits coming through at higher rates because of the cost inflation went up, wouldn't that be generating more money because you have more jobs coming through? So I don't understand, I don't run my business and say, I want to hire somebody to make it go faster for the jobs I have, so I'm going to charge more money. I, I, if I'm getting so much work that I need to, I've got more fees coming in, I need to hire somebody to cover that work.
Our fees don't adjust enough to match the increased amount of work, if that makes sense to you.
If there's that much.
Fees are set at a certain value. We set our fees based upon a average, normal year. We don't know what that year will be, but at the end of the day, the percentages don't go up.
It's not based on projects and, and the cost of the projects?
Well, it is, but it's also based upon what people tell us that the value is. And people tell, when they get more busy and more work, they're saying the value goes less and the number of inspections, it's based upon that. There's a bunch of different things that come into play. But I can tell you that at the end of the day, I mean, when you set fees, you set fees based upon what your costs are because our costs are supposed to match. Well, you guessed that. Well, if the workload and our costs are more, our fees are too low than to match when the work comes in because we set the fees too low because of the fact that we can't cha, we're not supposed to charge more than what it costs us to do business. So, I mean, as anybody in, I mean, you know, it's a very complex structure, but the cost of, our fees are based upon a number that we get out of the National Standard Magazine. That National Standard Magazine, if the lower forty-eight isn't going up, but we're going up, our value doesn't go up high enough to match our cost of living increase up here. So therefore, the fees stay lower. In, in some senses, in the last few years, the cost of doing construction in that table have went down because the cost in the lower forty-eight is down because it's a national magazine. We do have a thirty percent factor on that, but a thirty percent factor of a lower number still means lower number. And so, I mean, at the end of the day, you know, when, when I created the fees years ago, it was somewhere in the, you know, five, six hundred thousand or million dollar range. But even if we got six hundred thousand, the other thing is the Building Safety Fund is actually negative two million dollars right now. So, I mean, two point six or something. So, I mean, you know, it's trying to get that built back to where it's at least a positive number. But the reason why it's negative is because we haven't been making enough over the last few years.
That's a good argument for me.
Does that make sense?
That helps.
I mean, our, luckily, in our case, we lose money. Guess where? It goes into, the municipality bails us out and we have to pay them back. But in those low years and high years, you kind of go up and down and you're, because in a, the, the one question, you know, in a high year, it's great. We put some money in there. But in a low year, the year before is the inspections that you're doing. So you're cutting back on people. You're making less money, but you got to do all that work that you got money from the last year. So now we have to cover those inspections to get all those projects still completed. And so, I mean, it's, it's an up and down thing. I mean, just like in business, I understand exactly what you're talking about, but it's, you know, we're, it's one of those things. We're not supposed to set it over to try to make money. We're supposed to try to set it as close to even as we can. And it's, sometimes it's very difficult, so. But we are in a negative scenario, so we've been losing money and we've still been at, what, what, your building, you made six hundred million last year was the construction and we're going to be at six hundred, this year, six hundred fifty. So, I mean, it's on that edge of, you know, it's been too low to make up in that low time. And, you know, if construction gets higher, yeah, we might make that back, but we got to pay that back.
Mr. Chairman, look at that and try to, and Ron's absolutely correct. We're not trying to make any money on this because we did six hundred and twenty-five million last year evaluations and we're probably going to do six hundred and seventy-five million this year. And to stay up with that volume and to meet the benchmarks for the same-day inspections, the standards of performance that have been established for all those sections, to maintain those standards that administration requires us to maintain, we've had to expend considerable amount of overtime. So we've kind of kept very close track of all that to see how many resources are actually needed to stay up and still meet those benchmarks. And this five percent will, will put us there.
Mr., what is, what is this document you gave me?
I gave you two documents. One is the summary of changes from twenty-three, was it ten? It says it on the front. And then the other one is the filling grade.
But twenty-three seventy, I'm not getting twenty-three seventy. The admin code is twenty-three ten.
There it is in there. Those are the attachments. And that's all I could get in the twenty minutes before the assembly started. However, it's all in the email and everything, when we just finished.
So the whole code you gave me is twenty-three seventy?
There's two, there's two attachments.
I know. One oh five is a grading, but you say the admin code is twenty-three seventy. I'm not getting the.
Why do you know what I mean?
Ron, I'll probably look at this here. This is, this is my last iteration of it that Sharon left with me. So that's twenty-three ten there.
Mr. Logan?
Just to kind of back up, you know, we see changes here.
Are you sure that's not the, this is a dangerous building?
That was, that was also discussed and distributed. So there's, like I said, the twenty minutes before this meeting, that's what I was able to print and bring along. However, I think that right there is the other document.
Where? The one that you just gave me?
Yes.
So if you.
Go ahead. Just to kind of back up, it would be nice to see these changes somehow. To just discuss them is very professional, I guess. We see changes through all our amendments and different. If we're going to compare a document, there's got to be some way that we can at least look at what we're, what we're approving. I mean, right now, you did give a good explanation, but to follow it all along and not to be able to go back into detail on something.
It is difficult. They're not, they're non-issues, none.
For example, in the review at the end of the, the four-month period where we all sat down, went, went through it, ultimately, the decision was, since it's sunsetting, the three-person panel was removed from that when we were going to put forward. That's a significant change.
Well, we can't. I'm not going to be able to get that through the assembly when the assembly is the one who put that in.
It's sunset. Doesn't sunset? Okay. I think, I think.
It doesn't sunset. And I mean, you know, just to tell you how things work.
This is like eight months ago.
They're not going to take it out in one year.
Like I'm saying, this is what resulted in April. And so things have happened since then. However, there were.
Well, but that's, that's an issue a little bit with the administrating authority that has to administer it every day and has to go argue for this to be approved into a body that changed it themselves and made it. And I don't believe the code allows you to change what the assembly did within one year's timeframe of the time they made the last change. Does that make sense?
I think you're not following at the time.
I can't change that building board.
Please don't interrupt me. At the time, it hadn't been, had the sunset provision taken away. And so that was, that was the course that was going to be taken. Since then, I think that has happened, but this is what was, this is what took place back in April as a result of four months' worth of discussion. So there was a lot of, there was a lot of small changes that made sense. There were a lot of things that were badly worded, that were corrected.
I would guess that everything that's in there, nothing was taken. The only thing that I remember discussing from when Ross came to me was the three-member panel. And I said, when the assembly adopts an ordinance, that locks it in for three hundred sixty-five days. They adopted this again in a fix, I believe, last spring. It cannot be changed until after that three hundred sixty-five days. That's how the assembly laws work. That's what I have to handle and have to be able to go in front of the assembly and do. They, once you adopt something like that, you cannot change it. There's a reason why the assembly works the way it does. You can't just get an assembly, then they have a vote, you know, assembly members, and then they pass it, change the next month or whatever. They can't do that. There's restrictions. And so when Ross told me that, that was the only issue that I believe we talked. I would think that every other change then would be in here.
I believe there were changes in there that cleaned up some of the things that the working board did have some problems with. That is in there.
I see a dozen changes in here.
Yes.
Notifications and things like that.
Notifications was in there, yep.
That's been.
Posting.
The what?
Notifications has been clarified, the size of boards, the number of voting, voting members. That has been clarified in there from.
In the one that you have?
Yes, yes.
Yeah, correct. We fixed that language so it could do exactly what you want.
Some of that has, has been.
So I guess that's just kind of what she's saying. I note frustration on both sides. I know someone has spent a hell of a lot of their own time doing a review that they feel like just got thrown out the door. And, you know, unfortunately, Ron, you stepped in at a late date after that and, and, you know, obviously, that information wasn't transferred over, which it should have been. But, you know, I'm starting now to side a little bit here, Ron, with, with the fact that now you're saying there are some of these things and.
Every one that I'm, every one that I'm looking here is in this document.
Okay. Well, what are they? That's the question. What are they? Real simple. Highlight amount, take a look, have a real quiz or something, you know?
It's come to off and on. It, I don't know, Ron, you can decide, but it almost seems like we should unfortunately reconvene.
Well, I mean, just go through them. There's only a dozen of them. I can tell you exactly.
Well, that's here. Excuse me. That's the thing. We don't want to really talk about them or you tell us about them.
Well, if this is the document that we're talking about and there are twelve of them in here.
The fee changes and stuff like that, we should be able to have a document that says, just like this, here's a change. I can't see any of those changes right now. And, and I appreciate the explanation, but I think, I, I think I'm echoed here a little bit. There, there's nothing that should stop us from being able to look at it and say, that fee was that? Now it's changed to this.
Yeah, I would have thought that that already went out because Ross has done that document. So, I mean, that's what I would assume. So, yeah, I mean, I don't disagree with that.
These number revisions are small, as you say. There are, what, maybe a dozen of them. So let's, you know, let's go through these things real quick, read us.
Well, but we're not going to be able to go through the fees because I don't have that in.
No, I, I'm not reading about the fees. I, I don't think that's what's.
Well, the first page was Adam, adding item twenty-three seventy-five for NC, Institute of American Society of Mechanical Engineers. So that's in there.
Yeah, but I'm, I'm a little reluctant to postpone this here for a whole, for another next many weeks if we can, if we can handle it really quickly here.
Mr. Chairman?
Ms. Weaver?
I think for matter of experience, it would be better probably to postpone it till after the first of the year so you can get a marked-up version and easily. We get it to you in advance and you can easily see what was occurred and make your decisions.
My view is, I think they're all in there. Every one that I've seen in here is in this document. And so to assume that we just changed it, I think, was absolutely wrong. They're all in here. Every single one that I've seen is in here. And so that, so we start a preface on saying that it's not there, but yet it is. And so now we're going to delay it because of the argument that says it's not there and everyone I've seen has been in there.
I don't think that that's the argument.
I'm mainly.
Well, it is.
The argument now is, is people want to know exactly what the changes, exactly what the changes are without having a short version of it. That's one, okay, that sounds fine.
I assumed that you had it because I would assume that everybody would have it. It's not, so I don't disagree with that statement at all.
And I'm really mainly speaking of the fees. I mean, this kind of came in after the fact. I, I would just like to see, obviously, the changes, but I spoke primarily towards your explanation.
We had that document and we should have provided it absolutely a hundred percent. I mean, so.
Other benefit is you'll have the opportunity to have those letters back from those organizations agreeing that the fees are a great idea. So by the time we meet.
Mr. Straight?
Just to, I guess, summarize what's been said by others. I don't think as a board we should be approving the document has changes and we don't know what they are. Especially since this is one of the main purposes of our board is to review changes such as this. We're being asked, we're being asked to approve a document that at first we were told had not changed.
And I apologize. I thought you had that. I thought it had side by side.
I would appreciate you interrupting. At first, we were told it had only changed very minorly in respect to the fees. Now we're being told it has been changed, everything we wanted and. now we're being told it has been changed, everything we've wanted, and, to be honest, I don't have... I have a problem taking in the word, and I understand you're working through this, but you weren't aware of these changes until you saw that document. Looking through this, I'm aware of some changes that were discussed. Several members of our board have met and talked about voting. We had an issue with voting last year. We didn't think that language, some of those changes have been made, but our recommendation about the three-member panel was not made. So, that alone tells me that we don't know what's changed in this. There could be other things we're not aware of changing. I do not feel good at all about blindly approving this without knowing the changes. Thank you.
Mr. Steele?
What I was going to speak to Ms. McDonald brought up, and I assume, and I'll throw it out again as a question, if we were to postpone, would that provide enough time for this interaction with these three groups to have reviewed? Do you feel...
Mr. Chairman, Mr. Steele, certainly it would. You know, it's in legal. It's gonna be in legal another thirty days, the rest of the code, so this is perfectly fine.
And so, in follow-up with that, you know, it seems that we've got to a point where there's... It feels like there's some tension in the air on all sides with this, and it just seems that moving to postpone to a future date when everyone has the chance to review the specifics is in everyone's interest. I do have to point out that we didn't have that detailed document for each of the other sections that were approved, so I think we all have to recognize that this is the only one that's being handled in that way. And I'm just bringing up that we relied on a representative of the board to kind of be the leadership of those committees, so maybe this piece is the part that has not occurred with this, and this is the easiest way to resolve it, but I just think that everyone needs to temper their language a bit when they say, "I won't vote on it until I've seen it," because we have not seen that for all of the others in total. So, I think we have to be balanced in our comments and our perspectives.
What we had from all the other ones is, we had positive comments from the board members on each one of those that were changed, saying, "As part of that group, we had great interaction. I saw no issues in here." And here, we have the complete opposite.
Yeah, but the confidence has gone, and it can be rebuilt. So, maybe if I could... Are we talking, do we wanna postpone a time specific? Mr. Weaver?
Could I ask a couple questions before we put a motion out, please, that give Mr. Thompson an opportunity to respond to a couple of these that may generate some more? Ron, could you take a look at twenty-three-ten-one-zero-three-point-four-point-seven, please?
Can you read that, please?
The appeal filing fee...
Repeat the number, please.
One oh-three-point-four-point-seven. A minus on page fifteen.
Say it, what number is it?
One oh-three-point-four-point-seven. I don't remember this being this way, that there's a $100 filing fee that will be returned to the appellant if they or the representative attend the three-member panel hearing.
Fifteen.
That seems new to me. Is that the way that has been done?
They do not have to pay for that appeal at this time.
There is no fee for the appeal?
No. This way, they just pay it and they get it back if they attend, so they don't waste everybody's time by not showing up. I believe that's... Isn't that right, Jerry?
I don't recall the previous fees. I really don't recall.
I believe the Assembly tried to make it a zero fee, and they dealt with the three-member panel as a zero fee, and so, we just dealt with it that they really get... If they show up, then they get their $100 back.
Okay. I'll have to go back and take a look. I don't remember that, but I'm not gonna say that's wrong at all. My other question was on my document, page twenty-six. It's a unnumbered paragraph at the end of... Let me get back to the number here. One oh-four-point-nine-C. It's a paragraph after six.
About the supporting calculations.
About the supporting calculations and computations are not required to be submitted to the Building Department with the application. I do remember that being in there, and I remember discussion about that, that...
That was the Assembly change when they came back to revisit it, because the Building Department was trying to make them require those, and they did not. So, they got that through the Assembly a second time, and they are not required and submitted the calculation. So, it's an Assembly.
The predecessor was trying to get that out to have the ability to do an independent audit and...
It was at the floor of the Assembly last spring. That was all taken out, and this was the language. They did not allow the city to do audits on those. They do not want the calculations submitted. They want nothing. They do not want the municipality to look into those in any way.
Okay.
That's... That was the Assembly ordinance as written.
Like it or not, you're stuck with it. Thank you. Other questions and comments regarding what we do have in front of us that may assist Mr. Thompson in understanding other concerns that we may have at this particular time?
Mr. Steele?
It's a very minor thing, but in section one or two definitions, I didn't go through all, but just a brief look at the International Building Code, but this basically starts off that for the purpose of this code. So, with that start of the language, I think we're talking at all of the elements of the code, including this section, which is the administrative. It talks about terms and phrases, and then it goes on where terms are not defined, "The definition shall be in accordance with the international code," on and on. And just going through, there are a few I noticed in the International Building Code that are verbatim to what's included here, and in the International Building Code, in the margin, they have the A identification indicating that it would go back to the administrative code, so it's, I guess, handled double in that we're listing them in two locations, but there are a couple of them that differ in the two locations. And I don't know what the... Really, the correct way or if it really matters at all, but since we're taking the time going through and ending it, do you... Do we need to act on each of the specific codes to pull dimension or definitions if they occur here, or is the easiest way to make sure they match up?
Your calling is, it's been like this for fifteen years.
Well, I'm just saying each of these...
It's never been an issue definition-wise as a problem to administer the code without.
Right, and I'm just trying to work on something that is potentially improving in terms of coordination. You know, throughout the city, you can go between Title 21, you can go to the Building Code, and you can come up with multiple definitions of area, et cetera, and it just seems crazy to me that we can't start, you know, having the same definitions for all of them. I can live with it as is, but I just wanted to point out, it's an editorial point.
Mr. Logan?
I guess the comments are good. I don't know, we don't have a motion, but again, we're kind of stepping ahead. If we are gonna gather our thoughts, look at the changes, I would suggest that we do that and have our conversation at that point instead of try to go through as many changes as we can talk about but can't see right now, and then basically revisit it again when we do have the changes in front of us. So, do you... I guess if no one... I don't know how to do that, to just say, "Let's do it when we have the changes in front of us."
Mr. Colley?
I'd like to... I think one of the important things that the public would like us to look at is keep control of what we're talking about with the fees, so that probably is a really important one, and we really ought to see that in red line.
And I would like to understand the theory of how you're coming up with the 5%, and then, if you're tying that to the CPI, where does that stop? We keep increasing at two or three percent per year, increasing the percentage of construction that we're going to charge for fees. That doesn't make sense to me, because if you run that out, pretty soon, we're going to need as much to review the jobs as we would to... You see what I'm saying? If you just keep... If you think because we're having trouble keeping up or that there's a lot of work, we need to keep increasing the percentage that we get, I don't understand that theory or how we're tying that to the 5%. I'd like to understand...
Well, what we did is, we got 5% to try to match with what we needed. In addition to the fees and the structure, if we got the fees the way we were, then we put in language to try to match that each year, because typically, in municipality, the CBAs all get increases that are very close to CPI every year. So, our fee, no matter what, whether... We don't have the option, like private sector, to not give raises if they didn't feel like their profit was there. The CBAs are all negotiated, and in most cases, I mean, everybody reads it, they see it, you know, they're somewhere in that range of the CPI. So, the issue is, if we don't raise our fees by CPI, we fall behind because our wages, which is 80% of our costs, are going up by CPI. So, we... If we... So, if we go three years without, we just dropped by 10%. We lost 10%. So, if you lose 10%, you're just... I mean, for the same people, same work, same business, their rate wages went up in the 2.3 to 3.5 in each year. So, in three years, if we get no fee increases, we get more work, but now our costs have went up 10% over what we were evaluating it as a straight-line baseline thing years ago. That's the difference. We don't have the ability, and they don't base municipal wages on whether you're profitable or not. They get them by negotiation and regardless. So, each year, when we get a budget, our budget goes up by that CPU. If we don't have the revenue to match it, it gets cut. You gotta cut bodies. That's the difference. So, if we don't show a fee to match that, then guess what? We're gonna get cut, and you guys are gonna get less service even though you're paying CPI-adjusted fees. I mean, it's a very different process with regard to how we have to run our budgets and everything, and so, it's very difficult, and it's complex, and we try to keep those in line, but what happens is, if we get, you know, it's what's going on right now a little bit, we haven't raised fees, we're probably 10% behind. Jerry can't go and get any increases to add bodies unless we show some type of fee-revenue increase.
When we present this back to you in your next session, we have a financial analysis we can share that with you.
Yeah, and we'll show you exactly where the fee is made and what's increased.
That's what I'm getting at. I think we need to have that presented to us so that we can look at that and assess, "Well, okay, that's logical." But I'm having a little trouble because I'm feeling like I think it probably costs 5% more to build a building than it did in 2009, which, you know, was your statement. We haven't had a CPI increase since 2009 or something. Well, I'm pretty positive we can't build anything today what we did for then. So, it's what I'm getting at, is the... Since the values are going up, that is increased... Should be increasing the amount of money that's coming in. So, if it's not, then I'd say there's a... The problem is not the percentage you're getting, it's the honesty of the value of the projects that are being presented for the fee to be based on. Would be the only thing I can come up with right now. So, I think there's the real problem. We're treating the symptom, but it's a different problem, not the percentage rate.
I would say, based upon the fees, if you think about it this way, valuation goes up 5%, but the fee is based upon a certain number. It goes up. It won't. Because you're multiplying it by a 1% value, you're not gonna get the full 5% gain each year. I mean, the way these... I mean, it's just a... Because the... There's two things. The fees and our valuation don't go up by the CPU in Alaska. They go up or down based upon the CPU in the lower 48. If the lower 48 has a lower, which it has, but we go up because our CPI out here in Anchorage has went up, but our fees are based upon a national standard.
Yeah.
That 30% doesn't go up. It just goes up, but if the value... So, it might cost you more to do a building this year, but our fee still calculates that building as actually going down. Does that make sense to you?
Yeah.
Because the valuation based upon the national standard is lower by a fraction of a percent or stayed the same, but your cost went up 5%. Our cost went up 5%, but the value doesn't. So, if the value doesn't, our fees didn't go up at all, because the value of the building actually wasn't represented right. Because it's all relative. It's not a one-to-one kind... I mean, the value that we use is out of a table, and it gives you a type of construction, and you get a number. It's not really... And then, the fees are based upon that number. That number never really matches with the true construction value. Almost always, our... I mean, our number could be lower or higher, but it's relative to get the permit fee. But the problem ends up being is how you calculate that is through a national standard that may have a CPI of zero, but yet, we have a three-point CPI up here, and so, it just starts changing the way that...
Well, I guess I'd like to see when you guys present it back that you have a reasoning for it. Engineering fees are kind of done along the same ways. If you think about it, it's a percentage of construction. It's kind of how we come at it for a verification of our fees, and we haven't been increasing our fees since I've been doing this for 30 years. It's still the same percentage, because we rely on that the cost of increases go up. And our wages have went up. Just because we're private sector doesn't mean we don't give raises. I've given wages every year more than the Muni's been giving, so I don't buy that either yet. So, I just would like you guys to have a pretty well-thought-out version of why you're doing what you're doing with the fees, and then it'll make it easy for us to vote on it, say yes or no.
Chair.
Mr. Steele?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, I'd like to move that we postpone action on the approval of the Anchorage Administrative Code, chapter twenty-three-ten, to the next available meeting in January 2015.
I second that. Move by Mr. Steele, second by Mr. Colley.
Speaking of the motion, I think we can go on in quite a bit of detail, but I think we've kind of all talked to the issue that everyone kind of wants to see. The changes associated with the current proposed code, a little bit of background before actions taken by the board that permits that information to be presented, and it also permits the municipality to obtain the input from the various construction groups relative to the proposed fee, so that we'll have that all collectively together as we collaborate.
Mr. Donald?
I just have one.
Sure, go ahead.
One of the review was that the trade alteration permit, when we brought back for electrical, when it went away as a step, there was no real way for somebody to stay compliant without pulling the full electrical permit.
They're coming back, just not as a trade alteration permit. It's a different name.
Right, and that's what I wanted to follow up on, because I see trade alteration permit referenced in definitions of this proposed code adoption, but it's not written in itself.
It was actually taken... It was actually taken out of this new document, because that was terminology in a software program that was incorrect. So, we're doing it as a different permit, as a retro, and it's been adjusted in the fees and everything. So, if you look in the fees, we've decreased the hot water permit, hot water heater, the... All of those fees, let me see. They're just called, under Table 3E, retrofit permits. They're just called retrofit permits because if people looked in the code for trade alteration, we would have to re-edit our entire computer automated system to reflect that language, and that's not correct. So, under the retrofit permit fees, because you can go online and you can buy retro permit fees, now, they just changed those to where they're the... Retro permits limited to one new 20-amp circuit, no more than six, and like-for-like replacement of water heater. Decreased that price down to 75 bucks compared with right now. You'd have to get the full permit and pay... So, we did take that into... Just the terminology name had to change to match how we would process it in our computer automated system, because otherwise, we would have to rename and remake some modules, and we didn't want to do that. So, we did what it was that was wanted, just in a different manner, in a different name. So, that's why the fee... So that, that's why the fee increase, even though there's a fee increase for some things, these decreases counterbalance that and bring that number down. And so we have that. And I do apologize, I thought you would have had that because I thought that's just what gets sent out. So, I mean, I agree that you probably should have had that. We have that document, it's very simple. Ross wrote an update to this and all the changes exactly, so we have all those documentations. Somehow, I think, we didn't get that here so you could have. And just going through this, all these changes that are in here, every one that I've seen, I haven't found one that's not in this document. So I think there's just a, I mean, it's no problem with getting that, but I believe that all the changes that were made in the document that Jerry provided, these edits, are in this document. So, I mean, I don't, I mean, regardless of whether whoever and how we presented it, all of those, all of the hours that were spent and a group that did it, because I just got a document that was at the end, all of those changes I believe were made and it was like edited, except for like that trade alteration, just because the name changed. But other than that, everything that I've seen, all of the edits in here have been in this document. So you'll get that, you'll see that it'll match up with all of those and all those changes were made.
If I may, I'd like to go back to the motion. We have, we need little things that, minor questions or cleanups or something like that that we don't, if we can get to Mr. Thompson individually with that and we can do our business here.
And if I can, can, just to clarify, I may not have stated it, but the motion probably needs to address a meeting in January with a forum.
Any discussion regarding the motion on the table to postpone? Got a motion to postpone? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Against? Abstain? We'll postpone that, table that and for January. Do you have any reports other than administrative code, Mr. Thompson, that you'd like to share with the board?
Mr. Chairman, Ron has been working with the people, the Hanson people for our system, our permitting system, making really good progress in fixing a lot of those glitches that have been problematic for us for the past two years. And, you know, Ron has taken that out to get those fixes made so we could do more retros online, that we're making really good progress. And Mr. Assemblymember Evans put in an additional amount of money for next year's budget to help the onsite section to track the nitrates and the hillside synergy with that to make Hanson, to be able to put a little more resource to making Hanson more functional. So next year should be a better year for Hanson.
Some of the changes, the contractors actually here this week as well, so we're going through a bunch of changes. We put in a bunch of fixes as of about a month ago. Those fixed about 50% of our problems, all the plan review problems. We just edited the website, or, because everybody can go to look at your comments, that you should see a change if you go on there and pull up your comments. They're entered in a different manner, they're entered in the correct manner, they hadn't been, the program hadn't been used correctly since, from the beginning. So anyway, we reeducated everybody, fixed those problems that were made. So you should now, if you go and look at a comment online, you'll get a comment number, you'll get the code section, you'll get the description of the, of the problem, and then down below, the canned comment. And then down below, you'll get any specifics that if they wanted to edit the canned comment. So we're starting to edit in the system to have more canned comments associated with the code section, associated with things, and you'll see it in a different manner than you've seen it in the past several years. The functionality was always there, it was just being used incorrectly. So anyway, that got re-edited and done. We fixed a bunch of other things, and then the final fix, it'll fix about 90%, 95% of our problems that we've been having will go live December 29th. It'll fix the last few pieces. The dynamic portal, the inlet page that you'll go into your permits pretty soon, especially as contractors, is changing a little bit. You'll get a PIN number so you can go in and then you'll be able to go into only your projects. It'll pull up just yours and then you can hit your inspections and you'll see a difference in there. There was a few, a glitch that went out this week and contractors were calling because there was a, there was a problem with the, in the field software that was locking up being able to request an inspection. So they cleared that up, I believe, today, put this extra button back in there to clean it up. But for the, for the most part, this is a system that is very good, but wasn't being used quite correctly as well as wasn't configured quite right. So we've had a very small amount of money to put it back, to get it back in line. And it's actually, everybody that's been working in the department is so much happier with the program than what they were in the past. So you should start seeing, then we get these retros and you're going to be able to start getting these smaller, lower-priced retro permits for mechanical, electrical, plumbing very soon online, that's the next stage. And so then we'll start enhancing, like you said, watching for nitrates on the hillside because of this, you know, the possibility of having problems with the water systems on the hillside. We can start tracking all that and be able to report on that. Your inspections should, contractors, the inspection requests and the software going in the field, we're getting ready to get new devices for them that will make it simpler and easier. There was some email buttons and it was really tough to get emails out of those inspections, but that's been fixed. So there's a lot of positives associated with it. It took, really Jerry got no funding sources to be able to do it.
Those are very positive changes. Ron took it out of the public works budget to make that happen, so that's appreciated. The other thing is the e-review is going out on the street within the next couple of weeks for the e-review. Expect to, it's proposing in the month of January, first part of February, and we look to start its implementation.
Can you elaborate on that a little bit, please? Electronic plan review.
It's, you know, we're going to try to come into the 21st century and be able to accept plans submitted electronically. And they will process electronically, they'll process to the, you know, the reviewers, that you'll have real-time access to it. You, eventually we'll still have to provide a paper copy of your plans, but the reviews, you can, you don't have to have any particular type of system to submit those plans electronically. It takes, or the way we've written the RFP, there'll be at least 50 types of applications. It could be from a paper napkin all the way to sophisticated CADs. So it's going to be something that we all need. It will give us an efficiency of up to 30% on both the public and private sector side.
When do you expect something like that to be already implemented and ready for?
We expect to interview and award. And then, then it will probably take three months to implement.
Yes, sir. Mr. McKee.
Is this, does this have any way, shape, or form tied to this Hanson software?
No, it's not, but it's, it's, the way we've written the RFP, it has to be compatible in both directions to integrate in with Hanson.
I'd be reluctant to say, give a date when this is going to happen. For the last five years, Hanson, since they started with the not to be negative, it can only get better. I'll just put that one.
We have two permitting systems here in the department. We have something, a vendor called CityView on the planning side. So this, this electronic planner view, it's just the first step because we will implement it through CityView for the planning side. The utilities will, you know, in the future be able to use it. It'll be used municipal-wide. The first responders will be able to access those plans once they've been deposited into the repository for records and be able to actually access those building plans when they need to access them.
No, I can say that my hat is off to the staff here putting up with what they had to deal with, with Hanson.
It's not Hanson, I can tell you that. It was, I signed up on it before I went to public works. Edits were made to it and we're putting it back to what it was back then. So just to tell you, it's not the program per se, it's how it was implemented and changed from the beginning. It's back almost to what it was, therefore it's going to be operational. Like you said, there was just probably, we didn't spend enough money on training, so everybody did workarounds when the program was able to work operate correctly. So we've just re-looked at it, re-identified those. It's not the program, it's how we administered and how we mimicked a paper process in an automated system. So we went back, got rid of all of those manual processes and it turned it back to automated system that should clean up most of the problems that are there. So it just, it is what it is. I mean, so it, it's not, the program is more powerful than we've been using and how we've been doing it. So I think you'll, you'll see, it will get better, it's smoother. I mean, when the staff is happy and they just didn't even realize that it was able to do this is a big fix. So, I mean, it's a, it's just, you know, we didn't put enough training, funding in there, and so now we've been doing that and now we've been educating and fixing. And so we're pretty close to, and the reason I say that, Hanson sells this system all over the country. I got it for a discount because we were the R&amp;D, we created it here. They used, they've been using that software since that day. We changed it, for whatever reason, it is what it is. But now we're back to where, it's back into the canned program and it works and it is what it is. We got where we are and now we're going to be fixed from it. So the program is actually a very, very powerful tool. You'll be able to get reports when we get the crystal reports going and it's going to be a lot better for you in a lot of manners. We just, and Jerry didn't get any support from IT on this. I mean, we've had to battle and get IT support. Once we've got that, now we're able to make things happen. So it's not like Jerry hasn't tried, but they were not getting support whatsoever. And we had to fight pretty hard, me and Jerry, this past fall and spring to make this start happening. And they finally have given us the help, the resources to get it fixed. So, you know, it's unfortunate that some people, but, but remember, I don't, I don't believe it's the program, let's get into that. We're going to have some education times for the contractors to help you guys out and figure out how it can be powerful for you. But until that, I mean, until we get it fixed, we're not going to do that, but we will bring you in and show you the benefits.
Stop it. We're going to go backwards now and start over again. I've already been to the classes, I'm just.
Well, you probably have been doing possible workarounds and we need to get it to where it's simple, so.
Well, that's good to hear. If the retros and things like that, it speeds up everything. You have to come in.
Yeah, there's too many people coming into the building. I agree. Everything, I mean, we went from issuing everything online to not, and that's crazy. It's just absolutely crazy.
Well, that's good to hear.
Anything else from the board? Comments from board members, questions? Mr. Steele?
Mr. Tony, I'm going to hand out a piece of paper and it's related to the code and the cycle. And this came about, I attended a code conference sponsored by the ICC chapter on the existing buildings code. And through the presentation, there was quite a bit of discussion related to, and I highlighted the section under one of the alteration methods, and it's dealing with structural alterations and percentages. And it had in there a language that was describing a alteration period of five years. Quite a bit of the conversation was how you establish when that period begins. And so the only reason I'm handing this out, I don't know who chaired the exist, international existing building code or if this was even talked about, but there seemed to be a lot of conversation just in that group, which was well represented from the Muni side as well as from the design side. And it just might be worthwhile to bring it up to see if anyone feels this is something that maybe should be considered or reconsidered as we move the amendments forward.
I chaired that committee and I don't remember discussing this, this provision, so thanks for bringing it to everyone's attention.
And I don't know, you know, it's definitive, it's talking about historical work and work that might occur, but it talks about five years, but, you know, is that five years? How far back does it go?
Yeah, I remember the discussion about this is people would kind of put in bits and pieces and, you know, they're doing a full building retrofit in sections in such a way that they didn't get swallowed up by the whole level three alteration.
Right.
And this is an attempt to deal with that, but it makes it a little difficult to understand what, from what you're saying, when this five-year clock begins.
Right.
It's, it could be that the, the program that they're talking about getting this, electronic supplemental plans, if they're going to store everything electronically, that should become very easy to track because changes by date could be identified. And I think that'll, that'll solve that issue, but that could be a couple of years out, sounds like.
Right. And then the other thing, though, it didn't reach the same point, the instructor, it was brought up that when you're dealing with, say, like you had a five-story building and someone comes in to just deal with one story, it's at this 20% level, which means it didn't have to go through this higher level of alteration. And the instructor kept saying, well, hold on, we'll get to this. And he said, well, this is what simply the deal, you can't do that. But this doesn't speak to those other iterations, and I don't know if those were talked about, but, you know, it does permit you to take a five-story building and to do it over five years and not have to bring the building up to the higher standard. And I'm not proposing that we jump in and change national codes just because we can. I'm just, that's why I thought this one maybe had more merit because it did seem to maybe lack a timeline, but it might be that in the future we want to consider that other incremental levels that aren't covered.
That's a reprint from the building code, so did the building code discuss it?
Pardon?
With the B next to it, that means it was a, it was a reprint out of the building code, so did the building code folks discuss it?
Would that have come out of the appendix, though, instead of the body? That's the appendix that we don't adopt.
Again, what, what you're saying is that they can do what? What do you think that says? It says if they do more than 30% in a five-year period of time, they've got to bring it to full standards. Is that what you anticipate? That's, that's what this says, right?
That's what this says, and the instructor said he didn't see any problem with it, but he came from a jurisdiction that may have a better way of tracking the history of it. I mean, does this mean that building goes back 30 years? That was the first time you dealt with that floor and so you tracked 30 years ago for five years? I don't know. There was enough people asking the question, when does it start? And that it just seemed that it might be worthwhile giving this thought and seeing if it needs any clarity.
I mean, I think the building code says if you do more than 10%, you've got to do an upgrade anyway. So in this case, 30% over five years, this means you can do three, you can't do more than three 10 percenters for less than 10%.
Well, this was only triggered in the alternate three, you know. But it also, you know, the other issue that I brought up was that I think some people from the municipality were pointing out that some of the modifications to.
So you're saying probably track this in the building code to see if there's a permit on the same property within that five-year period of time and just for us to mod, is that what you?
Well, I guess, I guess it would be, what, what starts the five-year period? The history of the building?
Well, I would say, at any time, at any time, at any point in a five-year period of time, if you do more than 30% of the building, at any time, whether it's.
of time, if you do more than 30% of the building, at any time, whether it's 10 years, 20 years...
So, I guess when you adopt it, it says that you would look back as far as five years previous to the adoption, which would be 2015, so...
Or does the clock start now?
Right. Does it go back to 2010, or does it start with the adoption of this?
You start tracking now, and you move forward, and five years from now, if you've done more than 30% in that five years, boom, you gotta upgrade.
The question is, when does this begin?
Yeah.
Seems like any five-year period of time, whenever you look at a five-year period window of the...
Yeah, that's, that's the way I read the language, the way it stays now.
So, it's almost like...
It's retroactive.
Retroactive requirements.
That's what it sounds like.
For five years here.
That could be, that could create a lot of upset and anger in a big way. That would be very, very...
If they changed 30 more percent last year, that five square feet just now do a...
And I think that there would be a lot of uproar if you did that retrofit, or retroactive big time.
Alternate means and methods.
Is this specific to the structural portion in this, or is this language repeated elsewhere?
This is dealing with just the structural piece. Uh, the previous ones I was referencing that dealt with the 20%, uh, I think it was more than just structural.
The reason I ask is I, it's been a while since I used this code, but I believe the last time I did, this particular section did not apply. In fact, it was, and correct me if I'm wrong, Troy, you may use it recently.
It was, it was an appendix, so it didn't apply, I believe.
By muni, adopted by the muni amendments, this, if we don't use this, we use, I think, the chapter three, which has amended itself to be 10% of the structural system, and that's it. No five-year period involved, so this may not even be applying right now.
But what John's saying is, if it does make it, and it's in the body of the IBC, you either gotta edit it out of here.
This is the IEBC that we're looking at.
Well, IEBC, I...
Yeah, that's supposed to reference back to the building.
It references back to the building code, 'cause it's actually a building code section, it says, but what you're saying is it's in the appendix, so that...
And this is not adopted?
Yes, that's not a statement.
Yeah, that...
Yeah, I don't believe the appendix was adopted. But you're saying that the B means it's...
The B meaning, it means...
In the body of the code.
Well, well, no, it just means the IBC folks and the committee at the national level is the one who deals with it, not the IEBC folks.
Okay.
The, the, so, the structural folks in the IBC are the ones who review that code section. That's why I asked, did the IBC group here in Anchorage, when they did the amendment for the IBC, did they deal or do anything with this? And it sounds like what you're saying is they amended it out and accepted this 10% piece.
That's with regard to the existing building code, if it's the, yeah, the IEBC, if it's in the IBC somewhere, then it may be applicable, if it's not in the appendix. So, I guess I would question that.
Yeah, I can, I can find out where that is. The B just means it was in a different, and so, the IBC national group did not edit it. It was a reprint from a different, from the building code, structural foot. So, I can look up that and find out whether or not, if it's in the appendix, then it would have to either be adopted in the appendix of the IBC, or it's not adopted, and it's a, and then it would just need to probably be edited out of here, if, if, if that's what you wanna do. I, I don't, there's not very many permits that I deal with that this would apply, I don't think.
I think anytime you have a, a large building that's got full floor renovation going on, a multi-story building, um, you do one of those a year, eventually, things are gonna add up. I think that this could be a big issue for, for property owners.
But this is a...
This is only for structural alteration.
I agree.
If you do a floor renovation, doesn't matter.
Yeah.
It's only structural, and we have a 10% requirement, so unless that building's really big, you know, you're gonna run up against a 10% thing as a bigger problem than you are gonna ever run up against this.
Well, here's one of the other citations that I was making reference to, and I'm sorry I haven't done my homework, but this may not already be dealt with, but for example, in alterations level one, under type A dwelling units or sleeping units, it says, when more than 20 group R2 dwelling or sleeping units are being altered, requirements of section 1107 of the IBC for type A units and chapter nine, with the International Building Code for visible alarms, apply only to the quantity of the states being altered. So, I don't know how many hundred-unit apartments we have here are type A, but what I was hearing from the fire department was the concern that they see people coming in with 19 versus 20, and therefore, they don't have to step it up for this, um, and there was some concern with that. And that exists in a couple of spots. So, these things, I, I, I don't know that I'm jumping up and down and advocating, it's just that sitting at this, this seminar, it seemed to be a lot of lengthy conversation about these paragraphs on the level of 20 in this particular one, that maybe it's something that we have time to give it some thought before final action by the assembly, if it's warranted.
Any additional comments, questions? There are none, I'll entertain the motion for adjournment.
Second.
Uh, need a motion.
I'm making a motion, good, Jerry.
January 15th is supposedly the next board meeting.
Yeah, a couple of girls, three businesses, and, uh, building stuff, 35 or 40.
I like to say it's not always that exciting.
Is, um, I did, I did, um, I did it first night. This tension is good, like, uh, three years of immigration, and make it into...
It would, it would be very high. I've had so much time, these...
And then I get it out, and I will even tell you, Anna, in the telling, and, and get it, um...
Yeah.
Where to find Oliver Druck?
Because, I mean, I was literally this time, Phil.
It's very helpful.
Where I'm dropping out of, I'm like, it's out of my hand, so it's done. Yeah, I don't, I don't risk that one, I put it in my front pocket now.
I did, I did.
Yeah, the androids, I think, are a couple of machines.
Too many burpees.
Yeah, it's, it's a pros and cons.
It's, um, five rows of four.